Morning, everybody, and thank you for joining us in this extraordinary public meeting of the Regulatory Committee. I need to advise you that today's meeting is a public meeting and we broadcast live via our council's website. Firstly, I'm going to ask Donna, our committee clerk, to check that all attendees are present. Over to you, Donna.
Thank you, Chair. councillor Butt.
Present.
councillor Wildman.
Present.
councillor Francis.
Present.
councillor Brackenridge.
Here.
councillor Call.
Present.
councillor Tossam Singh.
Present.
councillor Jonathan Crofts.
Present.
councillor Bob Maddox.
Present, thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Donna. May I remind everyone to keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited to speak by me, the Chair. If you wish to speak, please press the right-hand button on the microphone once before you speak and once again when you wish to finish your address. If you wish... Oh, sorry, I've done that one. If you are referring to specific documents, clearly state the document number and page number. That makes it easy for everyone else. And I could just ask if everyone could put their phones on silence so we have no interruptions? It would be much appreciated. Donna, do we have any apologies for absence?
Yes, Chair, apologies have been received from councillor Matu and councillor Cocaine.
Thank you, Donna. Are there any declarations of interest that anyone wishes to declare? No, no declarations of interest, thank you. We're now to agenda item three. It's a review of decision-making in 2023 to 2024 and the scheme of delegation for 2024 to 2025, which can be found on pages one to thirty. Greg Bickerdike, licensing manager, will present the report to you. I will take any questions after the report. We'll let Greg do his report first. Over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Jan, through you. So this is the review of decision-making in 2023, 2024, so last year's decision-making, and the scheme of delegation for 2024, 2025, so this current financial year. It's an annual report that comes before the committee. We've removed a lot of the listed data that used to be in the appendices, that was pages and pages of decisions with the officer who'd made the decision. And instead, we've provided throughout the report summaries of the decisions with a little bit of statistical analysis, and that should hopefully help better inform future decisions by the committee. Delegations themselves from the committee aren't changed in any new functions being delegated. The key changes that we're proposing relate to the current vacancy for the commercial regulation manager, so we're just formalising the interim arrangements there, where we've got other officers who can cover and can make the decision during that vacancy. I just wanted to bring attention to a few of the statistics through the report. So around a third of people who apply for the private hire driver licence are refused a licence, and that's predominantly because of the information that we'd receive on their DBS certificate. So they attend a licence hearing and their applications are refused. There's been an increase of around fifty per cent in the number of hearings that we do for new driver licence applications. We do an average of just over five hearings every day now for new applications. When we talk about review hearings, that's for our existing trade, the existing drivers, we're doing just over six hearings a day for those, which is almost double the capacity of last year. So again, greatly increased the number of or the amount of work that we're doing for that. For existing drivers, when they attend a licence review hearing, around a quarter of drivers have their licence revoked at that review hearing. That's not a decision that we take lightly, but I just wanted to show that that demonstrates that, you know, we have robust guidelines. You know, Wolverhampton's not a walkover or anything like that, and where licence holders are found to be at fault, you know, we won't hesitate to revoke licences in the interest of public safety. Moving on to the number of private hire drivers, vehicles and operators, again, the statistics show that we've had about an increase of a third in all of those on there. So again, quite a significant number of people who are now licensed with Wolverhampton. If you want to see more statistics on that, that's on page eight. And again, I've just outlined in section seven point three of the report on that page, just reiterating really, for those unfamiliar with the regime, Wolverhampton can't refuse to accept an application. It can refuse to grant a licence, but if people apply to Wolverhampton for a licence, we must determine that application. And we're not allowed to refuse an application purely because somebody lives outside of Wolverhampton. That's a feature of the legislation, and that results in the situation that we're in, where we're getting people apply to Wolverhampton. Moving on to compliance operations, so again, I'd mentioned that we've... the number of licence holders has increased by a third. To make sure that we're a responsible licensing authority, again, we're essentially constantly recruiting in our compliance department, ever expanding there. And we had a record-breaking number of compliance operations that took place this year, so that's three hundred and ninety. And that's because we have three teams working, so effectively it works out to more than one compliance operation per day, where our folks are out on the street inspecting vehicles, making sure there's that continual deterrent and encouragement for people to be compliant with their licence conditions. The service's sole key performance indicator, that hundred per cent of safeguarding complaints, have a decision within one working day on requesting the driver to surrender their licence. That was maintained throughout the year, which I'm very proud of, and obviously we only have one KPI to show that the value that we place on that. We also audited one hundred and seventy-three private hire vehicle operators in the last financial year, and they were compliant with no licence reviews as a result. I know we've discussed previously the under-representation of women within the trade, and I know that the committee are all very supportive of encouraging more women into the trade, particularly because of the flexibility that the role of a driver can provide. And you'll be pleased to see that the number of female drivers has now increased to eight hundred, which is fantastic. And again, we would encourage more applications from women who perhaps considering a career change, want a more flexible role, or who might currently be out of work. That's the... I hope the committee has found that slightly more interesting than in previous years, where we've had the tables, tried to pull some information out. If there are... there's any more data or any more statistics or facts that the committee are interested in, I can both gather those for, you know, a response over the next few weeks, but we can also include those statistics in the subsequent annual reports. So, you know, any information that you want, if we've got it, we'll give it to you. If we haven't got it, we'll start collecting it so that we can report back to the committee to demonstrate the transparency of the service. I've waffled on for quite a while there, but yeah, the recommendations are before you, and obviously I'm happy to answer any questions on those statistics. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I think some statistics along the compliance operations and what you've found of them, I think that might be worthwhile including, because then that shows what we're getting out of it, and also that we're doing the right, because I've been out on them, where we do take plates off drivers if they're unsafe straight away on that night. So I think that'd be great for the committee to actually see that and, you know, have that bit of information for them, if that's possible.
Yes, Chair, of course, and apologies, perhaps this is... I've not perhaps labelled this table correctly, but on page nine, what we would call a section sixty-eight notice, which is where the vehicle's suspended, those are listed. And sorry, apologies, I realise now I should have clarified that section sixty-eight notice is when the vehicle gets suspended. So you can see that out on the operations, which I know you've been part of, that in the last year, we had to suspend one hundred and sixty-two vehicles immediately and stop them from working. Again, we don't take that decision lightly. Often, our offices are working on a Friday and a Saturday night, and we understand that that effectively means that they won't be able to earn until... normally until the garage open on the Monday. And what I would say is that the most common reason that we find is the results in these suspensions is illegal tyre tread on the vehicles. We invested in some laser tyre tread readers last year to help the trade, you know, we measure all of their tyre tread, and we can tell them, you know, whether you're close to the one point six millimetre limit, you know, when you should think about getting some change on your tyres. But obviously, if a vehicle has not enough tread, that is a public safety risk, greatly increases the risk of you, well, of the licensed vehicle, having a greater braking distance and, you know, going into the back of somebody, basically. It's not something that we tolerate. And if drivers are found to, you know, have, you know, really bald tyres, their licence could be reviewed and revoked as well. It's very important to us, and it would encourage all of the trade to be regularly checking their tyres, which actually is one of the recommendations in the next report, so I won't spoil that one. But yes, we'll move on to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. councillors, do you have any questions? councillor Francis?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things, please. On page thirteen, Hackney carriage exceptional condition criteria currently appeal to section leader licensing. Proposed changes appeal to licensing manager, service lead licensing, section leader licensing. Could you just give us an idea, or me, an idea of the structure, the management structure there?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if I'm connected to the... can we connect to the TV? I was just thinking, I actually coincidentally just have... I've made a structure chart recently, but I'll try and do verbally. So the primary structure, if I'm just talking about the taxi licensing in its simplest form, is that we've got the compliance service and the licensing service. We do have another service, but that relates to business systems and CCTV and things. But in terms of the licensing and the compliance, the licensing service, people apply to their licence for that, and it's decided whether or not they get the licence, and it's issued. The compliance service, they're responsible for investigating all the complaints against that. In the licensing service, we have licensing officers who do the vast bulk of processing applications. We've got the senior licensing officers who supervise those individuals. And then we've got our first line of management, that's a section leader. So we've got one over each team, so we've got one for new drivers, well, we've got two for new drivers technically, one for renewing drivers, one for vehicle applications, two for vehicle inspections. So they've got each of those teams, so those are your section leaders. And then above the section leaders, we've got the service lead, and then above the service lead, we've got the licensing manager. So what I've done there is that, because myself as licensing manager and service leader also managers, there are instances on occasion where a section leader's not available, and that means that myself, Orloran Jones, who's the service lead, can make that decision quickly rather than having to wait for the section leader to become available. So delegating up really, if anything, just so that we've got that provision in place.
Can I just ask another question?
Yes, yes.
Page seventeen, I think something should be omitted in the authorisation to prosecute. It's got current delegation, commercial regulation manager, and that position's now gone, hasn't it? So that can't stay in the proposed changes to delegations. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Apologies, I thought that I deleted all of those ones. I think that that's a typo, but yes, agreed. Page seventeen, the commercial regulation manager is... will be deleted. That's the whole point of this report.
Thank you. Any other councillors got any questions? I've just got a couple, Greg, if that's okay. Is there any more that can be done to get the direct debit payments for drivers on the DBS update service? Because I know we wrote to them to ask them if we can make it easier and not the transition we've got at the moment.
We are doing everything that we can. The DBS, we are working with them. There's going to be some kind of new system that they'll eventually develop. They... I don't think they're particularly aware of the problem previously. It was just something that wasn't on their radar. So obviously, the letter that he wrote to the DBS brought it to their attention, and there's been much discussion about it at many of the licensing meetings we have with them. The problem is, is that it's a massive service. I think that, was it two million, two point four million people use the DBS update service? Because it doesn't include just taxi drivers, it includes teachers and social care workers. So moving to the direct debit system is not a quick thing, but we are hopeful that it will be sorted at some point next year. In the meantime, we've got a dedicated officer who telephones drivers when they come off the update service, and we support them into getting back on there. We understand for the vast majority of people who breach that licence condition, it is because of this issue with the recurring card payments. If they've had a new bank card, it fails, and they're off the update service, and then they're in breach of their licence conditions. So we do support them. If someone's made a genuine mistake, we wouldn't be revoking their licence, provided that they're cooperating with us. On occasions where they don't cooperate with us, they don't speak to us, they don't, you know, work with us to get a new DBS certificate, then we have to assume that information is being hidden from us and that we would suspend or revoke the licence. But if someone's made a genuine error and they get back on the DBS update service, we wouldn't ever punish them for being back on the update service.
Thank you, Greg. And if it needs another letter writing, we'll do another letter as well, just as a follow-up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's no problem. And is there any indication when the number of applications for private hire licences will actually decrease? Because everyone's telling me Wolverhampton taxis are everywhere, so I'm just curious.
So the reality of the situation is, for there to be any change, there needs to be legislation. The... we... this isn't... this situation isn't a result of something that we can control in any of the policies or the procedures that I could propose to committee. You know, it would be unlawful for us to stop accepting applications, to refuse them, or to discriminate and say, you know, you live in Birmingham, we're not going to grant you a licence, and we would lose any appeal or judicial review on that fact. So the next step is effectively going to be working with government, trying to understand what legislative requirements or changes are needed so that we can improve the licensing system as a whole. In terms of demand just for Wolverhampton services, we still get people applying for licence with us constantly. All of our training courses are full, so there is no kind of specific ending in sight. But we are doing everything we can. Again, there are a couple of proposals in the next report, which make sure that whilst we deliver an excellent customer service, that we're not inadvertently attracting people from other licensing areas. You know, obviously, people... generally, it makes sense for them to apply to their own, the licensing authority area that they're in.
Thank you. And just on page eight of the report, I've noticed there's, with the renewal, there's a decline with both private and hackneyed drivers. Is there an issue or reason for that?
There's... this is... follows kind of national trends, really, that the Hackney carriage trade is in decline. I guess one of the issues is that if you want to be a Hackney carriage driver in Wolverhampton, and this isn't something that I propose that we change, because Hackney carriage drivers have the right to pick people up immediately on the street, they can be flagged down, we believe that our trade should be offering that service, being able to cater to everybody. And the key group here are people who use wheelchairs. Hello? Okay. I saw a statistic that a million people use wheelchairs in the UK, and we don't want to exclude that group of people from being able to get around. In fact, many wheelchair users are dependent upon the Hackney carriage and private hire trade to get around. So it's our policy, and it has been for many years, and the same policy applies in London, that all Hackney carriages have to be wheelchair-accessible vehicles so that wheelchair users can do them. Now, unfortunately, this has the inadvertent effect of meaning that if you want to become a Hackney carriage driver, normally you're going to have to spend more money on a Hackney carriage, because wheelchair vehicles, wheelchair-accessible vehicles are almost always cost more money than a regular passenger vehicle that you could get. So for many people who are looking to enter the licensed driver trade, the first step would be to be a private hire driver, and same, many people are choosing not to become a Hackney carriage driver because of the additional costs. But I also do think Covid had a role to play in this, and I think that a lot of people exited the Hackney carriage trade as a result of Covid, and they haven't been replaced.
Thank you. My last question, and then over to you, Greg. On page nineteen, what the school transport, are we as competitive with other neighbouring councils? Because I've spoken to a few taxi drivers, and they said Wolverhampton doesn't pay as much as other authorities, so I'm just curious, are we on par in, you know, offering the same sort of price to all the drivers as...
So the... and just to clarify as well, so this isn't my area, school passenger transport, that's organised by another area, but I am aware of how it works. So they... there's a competitive tender process that goes out to the trade, and they offer the routes, the journeys, so they'll say, it might be, this child needs taking Monday to Wednesday from X location to Y school. And then they offer this out to the trade, and then the trade bid on every single journey, and they say how cheaply they can do it for. Now, because we do have a significant trade, and it goes out to a lot of people, that means that it's more competitive, so there are people who are perhaps bidding less in Wolverhampton. And as Wolverhampton council wants good value for money for its residents and council taxpayers, you know, we're going to choose the person who says that they can do the job cheapest for us. So it represents very good value for money for us, but it may be that the drivers are obtaining less money than they would in other areas. But I don't think that that's a bad thing. There are reports of a council down south recently whose school passenger transport bill has increased by millions of pounds per year, and that will... that's likely as a result of there isn't big enough trade down there, so it's not as competitive. And there have been media reports of councils paying sixty-five pounds per mile because of the shortage of the trade in that area. And if only one person's bid on the contract and they've bid with that, you know, the council has a legal duty to ensure that that child gets to school. And I believe that another statistic I've seen is about, I believe it was fifty thousand children are unable to get to school because of a lack of passenger transport. As far as I know, we don't have that problem in Wolverhampton in getting enough, getting children to school. So I think that, yes, they may well be right, the drivers may be paid less, but that's because we have a vibrant, healthy trade, lots of members, and that provides very good value for money in terms of school passenger transport.
Thank you, Greg. I just wanted to make sure I've got all the facts before I get contacted again and I can have the argument with them. Greg, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Back to the previous point, really, about the legislative changes that are required. I think it was about six, seven, maybe a little bit longer years ago that the legislation was changed, where people could apply for a licence or an operator's licence, I think it's just a driver's licence, at any local authority. Well, the fact is, Chair, that we've done a really good job here. We're quick, we're cheap, and we're very thorough. So I actually praise the licensing officers strongly because they've worked within the system, and we're good at what we do. There's no doubt about that. But I would be more than happy to march down to Downing Street and say that that legislation needs changing. It's not good that you've got people from Manchester to Devon applying in Wolverhampton. Very, very difficult to keep your eye on these individuals, and that's part of keeping the public safe. So more than happy to try and get the legislation changed. We've always taken that view on licensing here. But until it is, we're in this position where, because we're good, we're cheap, and we're thorough, and we do things fast, people come to Wolverhampton, and that should be celebrated. So we get lambasted in the press by a number of authorities, behind the scenes, their officers are coming here to see how we're doing it. So I think it's a victim of our own success. The law was then changed. There's not a lot we can do about that, other than influence. But I'm more than happy to make the proposal on this standard annual paper, and we always tweak it to make us even better than we was last year. So I think, more than happy to propose this, Chair.
Thank you, Greg. councillor Butt, do you have a question?
It's just a quick one for Greg. You go on about competitive tender, Greg. Is that done through procurement unit or a different unit of the council?
I'm not a hundred per cent certain councillor, but there is a school transport passenger team, and they deal with all of that. They ensure that the drivers are licensed, but I understand it is a competitive tender process, and that's part of the council's drive to ensure good value for money.
Will we just have a brief note on how it's done for a future meeting? Which team does it?
Yeah, I will contact the school passenger transport team, and I'll ask them for a short briefing note that we can circulate to you. You know, we needn't wait until the next meeting for that, we can get that circulated to you beforehand, because it's not strictly related to Regulatory Committee.
Thank you, Alan. That's brilliant. And just going back on how thorough we are, my husband works for the train company and had to have a taxi to Soho from Birmingham, and just out of curiosity, he said, oh, you've got a Wolverhampton plate on your car, but obviously it was a Manchester accent. And he said, well, why did you come to Wolverhampton? And I says, it's thorough, it's quick, and they learn more on the training here, where other authorities just do the training for driving, Wolverhampton do the safeguarding and raft of different things. So I think that's just like showing credit. I did speak to Greg on Monday about it, but that just goes to credit to the teams that are doing the work, you know, and the word out there is, you know, they're very happy with what they're getting. You know, it's like anybody, if you... after a service, you're going to go to the best one that's going to look after you, you know, so I have to say all credit to the team, and if you can take that back to them, I believe, from everybody, also, you know, we all feel the same way. You know, it's one of the best teams within the council, I think, that we've got, I think we're very lucky. And I am privileged to be here to do this, because I think it's really good that we've got a good team and everyone's working together. Right then.
Sorry, Chair, could I just come in, just for councillor Brackenridge? I just wanted to assure you, whilst I appreciate that there is definitely a logistical challenge about licensing people across the country, those three hundred and ninety compliance operations we did, they are all over the country. We've got teams of officers who work remotely in different areas. Not everybody's based in Wolverhampton. You know, the public should be reassured that when they get into a Wolverhampton vehicle, that they are incredibly safe. In terms of, you know, your offer to get to Downing Street, that's very kind, and I think that's something we can bring back to the committee, proposals about what exactly we think that the, you know, the future of taxi licensing should be. Yes, changes to the legislation, but the legislation wasn't perfect before anyway. You know, how can we make this better? How can we apply what Wolverhampton has learned over the last eight years and provide the benefits for the whole country?
Thank you, Greg. The Regulatory Committee is recommended to endorse and approve the proposals in section three of the report relating to category two decisions, endorsing and approving the proposals in section three of the report relating to category three decisions, delegate category three decisions, make in pause to the director of residential services, resident services, sorry, approve the schedule attached to, at appendix one, to the report, which included further proposed delegations from the director of resident services, endorse the approach to decision-making on driver licence reviews in section five of the report, agree to receive further annual delegation update reports at the beginning of each municipal... I can't write that word. Municipal, yeah. miss, municipal, yeah. Do I have a proposal and a second?
I'll propose, Chair.
And do we have a second? Thank you both. All those in favour, please have a show of hands. Thank you. That is carried, thank you, everyone. Did you want to say something? No? You're pretty quiet today. We're now at agenda item four, changes to taxi licensing conditions, policy and guidelines which can be found on page thirty-one of your report. Greg Bickard, our licence manager, is to present this report to. Over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Chair, again, through you. So this is the product of the consultation that the committee approved previously, earlier this year. We, the government guidance was published in November, I think. Wolverhampton, first council to consult on implementing the guidance from the government, and if the committee approve it today, I believe the first council to implement the government's best practice guidance. This, we had a full twelve-week consultation, we received over two thousand responses to the consultation, so it was very helpful, it was really detailed and thoughtful feedback from many of the people, so I am grateful to everybody who responded to that. I'll briefly run through exactly what, generally what the changes are. So we've gone through and we've revamped all of the licence conditions that we have for every licence, making sure that they're compliant. We're going to, requesting that the committee approves a twelve-week public consultation on an inclusive service plan, and that we would bring that back to the committee for any changes before it was approved. Again, that's, how can we make sure that people with disabilities are able to use our service just as easily as somebody without disabilities? Again, one of the, one of the big changes about allowing private hire drivers to work with multiple private hire vehicle operators, I understand that the committee has been contacted directly about that matter. Again, to reaffirm, no other council does that in the West Midlands, the current position that we're in, we currently restrict drivers de facto through other licence conditions. And the government guidance is abundantly clear that we should no longer do that, and that we should allow drivers to work with multiple operators, so many of the conditions relate to changes on that. The other key change relates to the livery requirements of private hire vehicles. So obviously, as you know, we currently have a licence plate in there, well, it's not really the real licence plate, but it displays the licence number in the front window, and then there's the stickers on the side of the vehicle. Now, effectively, what the evidence has shown recently, and this is why the government's put the guidance out, is that when people use private hire vehicles, the way that they identify something as being a private hire vehicle is by looking for a vehicle with stickers on the side. Now, that's not the right way to do it. The way that people should be identifying that the vehicle is a licensed private hire vehicle is through the licence plate, and it is way too easy for people to print off their own signage, stick it on the side of the doors, go driving around an urban area, and then illegally apply for hire. So the, one of the key proposals here is to remove that door signage, to make private hire vehicles more discreet, because the only two people that should know that the vehicle's there to collect them is the driver of the vehicle and the passenger. So that will hopefully improve public safety. One of the other key things as well is bringing in a walk-around check, I had mentioned about tyre treads, and this is something that, you know, we want drivers to be checking their vehicles more regularly, what the government have given guidance on it, and it's much in the same way that people who drive other types of professional vehicle, so if you've got a heavy goods vehicle or a coach or something like that, before you drive that coach for the day, you're expected to walk around and fill out a sheet and make sure that the vehicle is safe before you get behind the wheel and start driving around members of the public. And the government is now giving guidance that that should also extend to handy carriage and private hire drivers. So hopefully, we will, we should, once these conditions have been rolled out. Chair, you'd mentioned about the amount of vehicles that were suspending private hire, sorry, compliance operations. If the trader doing these checks correctly, there should be very few occasions on when we're actually needing to suspend vehicles, because if the drivers checked them correctly at the beginning of the day before setting off, when our officers check them, you know, a few hours later, they should still be in the same condition. Another day is, one of the one is about the medical forms, so we currently have a medical certificate, and the government are saying that as well as the medical certificate, we should be taking a copy of what they call the D four form. So when a driver wants to be, well, when an applicant wants to become a driver, they go and get a medical, first of all, and the doctor fills out this D four form. It's proposed that we request a copy of that, and we keep that on file throughout the history of the licence. Another thing that I'm very pleased to announce, and hopefully the committee will approve it, is that we've been working with our adult education department to devise a renewal training programme. So currently, in Wolverhampton, as with, I believe, every other council that I know of, you apply for your licence, you get, you do your training, and then you get granted your licence, and you would only receive training if there's a new module that's come out. So the committee previously required additional training for child sex exploitation and safeguarding, so we got all of the trade back in, and we delivered some additional training. What the government are now saying that we should be doing is that every time a driver renews their licence, that they attend the training again, or some form of training. So that's something that we're working with adult education, Wolverhampton, to deliver. It will be a different type of training to the one that they receive when they apply for the licence originally, and they will do that at minimum every three years, because that's the longest licence that you can get. If somebody's going to get an annual licence, they're going to have to do the training every year, but if they do the licence, if they get the licence for three years, they'll get that. So we will have a far greater, a better trained trade than any other council, I believe. We're also formally proposing the definition of an assistance dog, which we've included in there, just so that it gives people clarity. You know, I do want to confirm that emotional support dogs aren't proposed for that inclusion. There's no legal definition of an emotional support dog, and it's too easy for anybody to claim that their pet is an emotional support dog, which isn't fair, and it undermines the integrity of the assistance dog recognition scheme, so we are being quite strict in what we will consider an assistance dog. Another thing that councillors might want to be aware of is that we would, again, on the instructions of the government, is permit applications for licences from people who hold a foreign driving licence. Currently, we only accept applications from people with a UK driving licence. The caveat that we've put in, and this came out of the consultation, this wasn't something that government proposed, is that, okay, but we're only going to, we would only allow that if you can swap your licence for a UK licence. If you come from a country where you need to do additional testing before you can get a UK driving licence, we wouldn't just let you apply for a private hire or a handy carriage driver licence, so they'll all be at the same standard. There are various other proposals, but they're all obviously outlined in the report, but I think that those are the, oh, sorry, one more key one I wanted to highlight is that currently we have a list of approved MOT stations that are allowed to do the, inspect vehicles. The government has said that it's not for us, the council, to say which MOT stations are acceptable or not, and that all MOTs across the country are equally valid, and that we should accept MOT certificates from any DVSA regulated station. So we would propose to remove that approved list, and we'll just accept an MOT from anywhere. If there are concerns about a garage, then we can raise those directly with the DVSA for them to take enforcement action against that specific station. One final thing, it's also proposed, because the government are saying that we should be moving away from age limits and more towards emissions-based policies. Now, we provided them an emissions policy previously, which was rejected by the committee. Given that we know that people can just apply to any licensing authority in the country, we need to make sure that any ultra-low emission vehicle policy is robust and supported by neighbours, so I'm proposing that I work with the West Midlands region at the very least, likely the West Mercia region as well, so that we can have a consistent ultra-low emission vehicle policy across the area, because if we don't have the same, then people would just go to a council where, you know, they allow any vehicle on, and then they carry on working in the same area anyway. But it is proposed that if somebody buys an ultra-low emission vehicle, that the age limit that's currently in place for private hire vehicles, that's typically twelve years, would be removed. The government's saying that we shouldn't really have age limits in place, and that the vehicle would still be required to undergo MOT testing, and at that age, when we previously increased the age limit, it was agreed that the, that they would undergo MOTs every six months, so there'll be a greater frequency of vehicles that are older than twelve years than for newer vehicles. I think that that's all of the key points, but obviously there's a lot in the report, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but the recommendations are before you. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one other thing. And just, so on page, relating to the recommendations, if recommendation ten is approved, the condition four point one on page one hundred and twelve wouldn't apply, so that's what I referenced earlier about that, the display of the vehicle licence number in the windscreen, that would need to be, that condition would need to be removed, that's not compatible with the recommendations. And I also wanted to clarify again, in relation to the correspondence that you received earlier this week, page thirty-two, recommendation twenty-seven, we've said that we wouldn't be requiring operators to submit their contracts with passengers or the hireer of the vehicle until after the court case relating to this matter, Uber Sefton, which is actually ongoing this week, has been settled. But I also want to say that we wouldn't propose that that would be included, sorry, required until after the VAT consultation on the matter, and there's a big query about at the moment about whether or not VAT should apply to private hire journeys, because generally they don't apply to handy carriage journeys, and it's a similar form of transport. But to reiterate really to the committee that, because this matter's going through the courts now, and the government's intervening on it, whatever the outcome of the consultation and the court decision on the matter in relation to VAT, and operators acting as principal or agent, the committee are going to have very little, if any, discretion on this matter. It would be applied across the country, all licensing authorities are going to have to respect it. VAT isn't something that we are responsible for as a council at all, and that's an HMRC matter, but if somebody was in breach of the VAT rules and they were prosecuted and they were convicted, as a committee, you know, we could review their licences, so it's not directly relating to us, but we obviously can take some action. Thank you, that is everything I can confirm now, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Chair. I'm a little bit concerned about the emotional support dogs situation. I understand that they're not officially serviced dogs, but if someone went to their GP or with a medical intervention and got a letter to say that they needed this dog to be able to go about their daily life because of anxiety or whatever, and then they refused a taxi ride, could we be challenged under the Equalities Act?
I don't believe that we would, because there is a section that covers... I believe that there's a form of assistance dog already that would perhaps, the circumstances that you're discussing, if I can just try and find it. Yeah, I might have to come back to you on that one councillor, but I think that ultimately this does come down to a matter of the law in that, you know, for whichever reason, emotional support dogs aren't covered by the current legislation. So I think that, I don't think that we could be found at fault by following the legislation, but I think that the government was saying it's up to the councils to make a decision on defining assistance dogs. So, yeah, so we're not currently proposing to do that, and perhaps, you know, if there is going to be a change in recognising emotional support dogs, that that would be at a national level rather than a local level, because obviously, as we've said, our traders across the country, and this wouldn't just affect Wolverhampton.
Thank you, Greg. Councillor Brackenbridge?
Thank you, Chair. Just one, a few questions about the removal of livery. This is something that's come up quite regularly at this committee, and I do remember the last time that it came and that we rejected this. I do understand what the officers said, that they're highly visible, and that it could well attract people to flag them down, but that then is a responsibility of the driver to say, you've got to ring in. I've got a concern looking at this, that where we're removing the internal badge, if I'm taking a taxi and someone's driving dangerously or too fast or whatever else, or refuses me an assistance dog or whatever else, if I'm in that taxi, I don't know their licence number if there isn't a plate on the inside. So it's okay getting into it, but who gets into it reads the right licence plate and takes a note of it? But when you're in there, you might decide that you want to do that, and potentially could report a driver. We also took the approach that high visibility was probably safer for the public, because people could drive round in cars with hardly anything on them and apply as a private hire driver. So this is a, this is a double-edged sword, really. Whichever way you go, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. I would like to see some briefing on the national logic for why they've gone down this route as best practice, but we rejected this previously, and I think, still, I'm willing to go either way, Chair, and what the committee decides, but either way, there are issues with this. But I still am kind of leaning towards high visibility as probably safer. Thank you, Chair.
Greg?
Yes, thank you, Chair, through you. So I understand about the complaints, and I have considered this, and this is the beauty of the private hire regime, in that whenever there's a, you know, this was the same thing about door stickers previously, about if you're subcontracting, how do you know which operators to contact? But it's very simple, all legal, legally booked journeys with private hire operators, there's an audit trail, there's a record, you know, our operating conditions are quite comprehensive about what that needs to include, and that definitely includes the driver and the vehicle. So anybody who's had an issue in a private hire journey, if they... So anybody who's had an issue in a private hire journey, if they simply contact the operator that they booked the journey through, the operator will always be able to identify which driver and which vehicle that the person was travelling in, where they were travelling from, where they were travelling to, what time it was, and they will be able to pass that information to us as a licensing authority. So I can reassure you on that, that I don't think that this will result in any difficulty in still complaining about people. In terms of visibility of the vehicles, I think that this is the point, is that if somebody was approached by somebody in a completely unmarked car, so the car that I've driven today, just approached somebody on the street, that's just a normal car, and I think that people would be far more suspicious, well, this is, you know, what I would hope, of just somebody being approached and then with no signage, no licence plate on the vehicle at all. Whereas if I've booked a private hire vehicle to pick me up, let's say, pick me up after this meeting, I'm expecting a vehicle to arrive. Now, ideally, and many operators, you know, should be able to do this, that the, when I'm making the booking, if I'm booking it now, the operator will be able to tell me the name of the driver and the licence plate of the vehicle, and the, you know, vehicle colour, vehicle type. So when I'm going down there, I can expect that information. If they can't provide that information, they've not immediately allocated a driver, the driver would still know that he's going to pick up Greg from Wolverhampton Council, Woolford Industries, and also know my destination as well. So that when the driver arrives, the driver has information to identify the passenger as well. And again, I think that, you know, I've tried to include in the report is that this is how the licensing regime in London has always worked. For many, many years, they've never had the stickers on the side of the vehicle. So there's kind of a good evidence base in terms of a model that already works for this. I think, you know, we refused this previously in the past, but this is the beauty of a democracy. We receive new evidence, we receive new information, and we, you know, you can change your mind as a committee, and that's what I'm, you know, proposing and encouraging you to do today, that the risk from signage now, counterintuitively, the risks outweigh the benefits for it, and it would encourage us to remove it. But again, you know, that's not a forever decision, and if it was a catastrophic mistake, the committee has the power to reverse that decision and reintroduce signage at a later date. But I don't believe that will be necessary, but the option is always there for you.
councillor Brackenbridge?
Thank you, Chair, for letting me to come back. I mean, I'm willing to listen to the expertise of the officers, we've just praised how good they are and they know what they're doing, so I'll go along with the proposals. I mean, what the officers just described, though, is there was a lot of assumptions there, and I understand that. If people go through the right process, absolutely right, it's very safe. But people don't always do that. And there has been instances of people who hang about outside at the town centre, oh yeah, you know, people are jumping in taxis, jump on in, we'll get you home. People do it, we know it happens. And that is a very dangerous situation, particularly for certain groups of people. So I am willing to listen to the officer's expertise. I do think that we should be, have a review of this in six to 12 months maybe, so that we can see if we can get any evidence of people who are doing this illegally and how prevalent it is, and if it's on the increase when we remove delivery. I think that would be reasonable for the committee, but willing to listen to the officer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Greg. Do you want to come back?
Yeah, absolutely. So we will get data from the police, and obviously if we have our own compliance information, so we'll do a check. Just thinking perhaps the January committee probably be most appropriate, and if we've had any incidences of this, we can report it back to the committee and then we can, you know, reconsider the decision. The only thing that I would say is that it will take a full year to roll this out on the new licence conditions, because obviously people who are granted a licence today or yesterday, you know, before the changes are in place, they would still be required to display the door signage, so it's going to be a transitionary period, but I'm still more than happy to report back in January.
Thank you, Greg. councillor Singh?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Chair. Greg, you mentioned about the drivers to complete training. Is the cost within the actual licence itself, or is that a separate cost for the drivers' training? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we're going to have a think about the way that we do it. We know that it's got to be cost recovery, we're not going to make profit, so whatever the cost is, the cost is. Ultimately, the trade pays to regulate itself, you know, that's just the way that it works, there's no profit or anything like that. So any work that we do is ultimately paid for by the trade. What I was thinking is that, as I mentioned earlier, if people are applying for one-year licences, so over a three-year period, you could get one driver who does the licence every year, so it would attend the training three times, or you get one driver who only does it once because they get a three-year licence. Now, if we just absorb the costs of the training and put it in the licence fee, we may well have to increase the licence fee midterm this year, and it would also mean that the people who were paying for the three-year licences, that they're subsidising the people who are attending three times. Whereas if we charge separately, and the person who keeps doing it every year, then they're going to have to pay their fair share of the cost. So likely when we introduce it, it's going to have to be a separate charge for people each time they attend the training. And depending on the way that we do the mechanism about pass or fail, if somebody keeps failing the test, you know, they're going to have to keep paying to do it, because they should already be at that standard, you know, it's not everybody, it's not all of the rest of the trade who are competent, it's not their fault that this individual driver keeps failing the test. So we'll be careful about the way we do it, but whatever way we do it, we'll be doing it in a fair manner, and we won't want people to be shouldering the costs of people who are doing the test too frequently for whatever reason.
councillor Singh, do you want to come back?
Yes, Chair. Chair, so the cost, is that to the education department, or do you get to keep the cost there? Because now, within the actual cost itself, or the fee or the charges, we can't actually, it's all ring-fenced within the licensing department, but with the actual cost itself or the training, is that being given to the education, considering the strain on the finance the council's under?
Yeah, so we can't, as I say, we wouldn't be able to just give money away to the department. And there, just off the top of my head, there are two ways of doing it. Either they pay the fee to licensing services, but we would then have to pay for room hire, course materials, the trainers, you know, there are staff who are going to be employed by adult education, so they're not going to be out of pocket because we would be paying for their services to deliver it. Or we may, you know, rather than messing around, recharging budgets, it might be easier if adult education just take the money directly. But again, to reiterate, there is no profit, so however much the course costs to deliver when we added all the maths up, you know, all of the sums up, that will be the cost. There's not going to be any discretion in how much we charge, it's just going to be, it's cost recovery, how much does it cost to do it right, that's how much the trade have to pay.
Thank you, Greg. I've only got a couple. In general, do other licensing authorities permit private hires to work for multiple operators?
So I did a little survey of West Midlands, and they all permit people to do that. They do, I'm aware of two other much smaller district councils who don't permit it. But again, we're all beholden to the same government guidance, and we have a statutory duty to have a regard to the government guidance. But in this area, it is quite clear that we shouldn't be restricting drivers from working with one operator. If drivers want to have an exclusive relationship with a driver, then they need to have a contract between them, you know, potentially a contract of employment, and that confers workers' rights upon them, so they might be entitled to sick leave and things like that. That's how the relationship should be, if it's going to be exclusive.
And when will these new licence conditions take effect?
So for the licence conditions themselves, we'll try and get those implemented as soon as we can, hopefully from tomorrow, so we can roll those out immediately. For many of the other things, it's going to be a gradual process. The driver training, we can, you know, begin work in earnest on that if it's approved by the committee, and roll that out over the next few months. But perhaps that might be an idea, Chair, you know, coming back with councillor Brackenridge's point, if we do the follow-up review, I can report back on a progress update on how much of the recommendations and proposals that we're able to implement. But with all of it, we're going to do it as quickly as we can, just, you know, for the benefit of the trader.
And my last one, you'd be... I agree with Greg, and so I've got some serious reservations about the signage on the doors. And so I've looked at the percentage, 93% support it, you know, so I'll just look at, when you, I've got a daughter that's coming 18, she's uptown, she's found ABC taxis, she's going to be looking for ABC taxis on the door. Not a lot of people, when I speak to them, realise, take the number, the taxi driver number, so I'm a bit wary, but we've got, as Greg said, we've got to go, you're the experts, and we're going to go with the percentage that's come from the survey anyway. But I just want to place on record my concerns around this, you know, because it's quite easy, and so I've seen some taxis, they've got like a little yellow sticker on the door with the taxi number on, noticed a few of them floating about now, and they're easy to make, just whack on your door, you know, so I just want to be mindful, you know, and make everyone aware, you know, that we do need this back in six to 12 months, just to see what's going on, because I really do fear for our residents with no signage, you know. You know, if you booked a taxi, you look outside, oh, there's my ABC taxi, and you can speak to him. If it's a number, as Greg said, anyone can jump in, you know, and it does happen out there, there are unscrupulous people unfortunately, and I think of our most vulnerable of society, we've got to protect them, so I definitely want to see that come back to this committee, just for peace of mind, really, and so I think everyone around the room would agree with me, it's peace of mind for our residents.
Thank you, Chair, and if anybody is listening to this, the key message that I want to say is that if you've booked a handy carriage or a private hire vehicle in advance, or even if you're getting into a handy carriage, always look on the back of the vehicle. The way that you can tell that a vehicle is licensed is through the council licence plate that's on the back. The, it should match the registration number of the vehicle, it'll tell you how many seats the vehicle's licensed for, it will tell you the expiry date of the licence, you need to make sure that it's in date as well. But this is the key message that both the government and ourselves really want to get across, is that people shouldn't be using that door signage to identify a licensed vehicle. It doesn't, that signage doesn't really mean anything, it just means that someone's put a sticker on the door. It's very difficult to impersonate the council licence plates, you know, go around there, check the licence plate on the back, and it wouldn't be unreasonable, you know, if you're in any doubt, you can always contact the operator, and the operator will have, you know, once the vehicle's been dispatched for that journey, they will be able to tell you the name of the driver, their licence number, the, again, the vehicle details as well. So if anybody's ever in any doubt that whether the vehicle's arriving is legitimate, check the licence plate and phone the operator that you booked the journey with.
I just wonder whether we could push something out in our comms, you know, on Wolverhampton today, for instance, just making people aware, this is the change, just so they're aware to look at the back of the taxi, get those details, because I think we need to put the word out there, this is what you need to do, just to make sure your journey's safe. If we push it through the comms, we know that gets to thousands of people, we can all do it by word of mouth, but that's a great, a good vehicle for us to promote the new changes.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We will do that. Many of these changes are going to affect the trade, hopefully in a positive way, so we're going to have to contact the trade directly, which we can do via email, via the quarterly newsletter. But yeah, you are absolutely right, we can do a press release as well, making people aware of the changes and that not to be alarmed if a vehicle turns up without door signage, as people have become accustomed to.
Thank you, Greg. The regulatory committee has recommended to approve the changes in the outlined report. Do I have a proposal and seconded?
I'll propose, Chair.
Hobbin the seconded. Thank you, that is carried. That brings the end of this meeting, and I thank you everyone for your participation and turning up, and all have a lovely day. Thank you, everyone.